I'm a Commissioner and I'm the Vice Chair of the Commission. I am also the interim Chair of the Quality Improvement and Patient Protection Committee. So I'm here today to welcome you. We will be joined at some point, once they make their way both through traffic and in slightly overloaded parking garage, by Under-Secretary of Health and Human Services Alice Moore and by Commissioner Carol Allen. So as they come in, I'll probably break for a moment to introduce them. And let me just take a moment before I begin and ask the staff of the Commission to introduce themselves. Lisa, if you would start at your end, that would be great. Name and what you do.
Good morning. Mrs. Snodlin is Assistant General Counsel of the Health Policy Commission.
Hi, good morning. I'm Colleen Elstermeyer, the HPC's Chief Staff and Director of External Affairs.
Good morning. I am Lois Thompson, General Counsel of the Health Policy Commission.
Thank you. As many of you know, this is the second meeting and of the second set of hearings to help us understand your points of view about the proposed nurse staffing ratios for intensive care units. In the first set of hearings, we really focused on the ratios themselves, and that was extremely important to us and has helped us rewrite and revise the regulations. Today, the focus is going to be on two things: the proposed regulations around the acuity tool and the proposed regulations around the four quality measures. So I'd be very grateful to you if you would really focus on those two things. I have to go through just a couple of important process issues for you. The first is if you have not yet had an opportunity to sign in, please do so, and you can do that with Kate, who is graciously closing the door right now, or with Kelly, who is just leaving. So let me revise that to say, please sign in with Kate. The second process issue is that the way we will work today is that I will call the first person up to testify, and then I will let you know simultaneously who's in the batter's box. So you'll have a moment or two to collect your thoughts, and you'll always know who's coming up next. We do, as a courtesy, interrupt the order of testimony when we have a legislator coming. And today, approximately, give or take 30 minutes, we will have Representative O'Day from Worcester who will be coming, possibly with some of his staff as well. So I may have to break the order at that time, just to let you know. I'm really, really grateful to see such a phenomenal turnout. There are more people here than there were at our Boston hearing, and that is sensational. So thank you all for making the effort to come. And as someone who more often than she would like to testify before Congress, I know how much effort goes into the work you do to prepare to come up and testify. It's not an easy thing, and I just want to start out by saying how grateful I am for whatever has gone into your preparation today. That being said, in order to be fair and make sure that within the two-hour time period, people really do have an opportunity to express their thoughts and ideas and opinions that will enable us to improve our regulations, individuals will be limited to three minutes of testimony, and panels will be limited to 10 minutes of testimony. And this is only done so that everyone has a chance to come up and speak. I think a final process issue is that if you intend to take these proceedings, would you please see Kate or Matt and let them know that you're going to do that, and that's just so the Commission knows. And I think the one thing that I omitted that is critically important is that if you need a parking pass, that you can also see Kate at the sign-in table. Kate, you are fully employed. Anyone who would like to and has not yet done so can also submit written testimony. So today, we're really enthusiastic about hearing what people have to say. That written testimony needs to be submitted to the Commission by noon on Monday, April 6. And there is no difference between written and oral. We give equal weight to both of those. So I just need to check with my keeps here and see, did I forget anything about the process? No? Okay. Great. At the very end, I will also ask if there's anyone else who would like to speak at the Boston hearing we did go over just a little bit. So I'm going to begin and invite Karen Coughlin, the Vice President of the MNA, to come up and testify first. And after Karen, I'll invite Joan Vitello, who is the President of the Organization of Nurse Leaders. I am working off of a written list that people submitted before, so if you've had a substitution, I apologize for calling the wrong person, but I'm sure you will know how to get there. And if you would begin, Karen, by just saying--
Test your microphone.
Yes. Bring the microphone up so everyone can hear you, and just say who you are and where you're from, and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Karen Coughlin. I'm from Mansfield, Massachusetts. I am a nurse and the Vice President of the Massachusetts Nurses Association, MNA. My colleague Donna Kelly Williams spoke on behalf of MNA at the hearing last Wednesday. I'm here today to speak on a few additional items that Donna was unable to cover in the time it was allotted last week. The MNA and Donna's testimony last week addressed several concerns we have with proposed regulations as they relate to the acuity tool. I will not reiterate those concerns yet today, but will raise some additional concerns. The first is that there should be some direction in the regulations that the ICU acuity tools developed by the hospitals be specific to that hospital and the specific ICU or ICUs in the hospital, be it a general medical surgical ICU, a burn unit, or NICU. Each of these units would require different conditions and elements to be part of the final acuity tool. The acuity tool cannot be cookie cutter. It must be developed with the ICU staff nurses and specific to the unit and to the hospital. When the MNA reached out to several of the manufacturers of existing acuity tools, they did not indicate that it would be difficult to create these types of specialized acuity tools. Also, in addition, in relation to the acuity tool development and selection at hospitals where nurses and other healthcare staff are represented by unions, the union should be involved in selecting the members of any committee working to develop and approve the acuity tool, whether it's the MNA representing nurses or another union representing other healthcare workers and ancillary staff. The union should decide who is on these committees. Direct care nurses must comprise at least 50% or greater of these committees, and we cannot allow them to be handpicked by hospital management. As Representative Denise Gahill noted last week in her testimony, unless you ensure that the workers and their union select the appointees to these committees, they and any tools they develop will be meaningless. Finally, I wanted to take a moment to dispel the notion that there are any quote-unquote "great areas" around what it means for a nurse to accept an assignment. A patient is assigned to a nurse, and the nurse takes that assignment under his or her license. If, for any reason, the nurse must leave the unit, for example, to take a patient for x-rays on another floor, any second patient that might have been assigned to that nurse is now reassigned to another nurse who is on the unit. There is no such thing as covering a patient for another nurse. The patient is assigned to a nurse, and it is that nurse's responsibility until discharged or being reassigned to another nurse. And this law is in effect at all times. We thank the HPC for reiterating that in the regulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And I also very much appreciate the coordination between the last testimony and this one. I know I did have to cut her testimony short, so brilliant.
We understand. Thank you.
And as I said, let me just take a moment now. I have introduced you in a sense. Now, in real life, Commissioner Allen is to my left, and Under-Secretary of Health and Human Services Moore is to her left. So we're all here and ready to go. I am going to change the order because we've had a few additional sign-ups come in. So a moment ago, I said that I was going to ask Joan Vitello to come next. I'm sure that this panel can be very nimble, so instead, I'm going to ask Tim Quigley, Fay Weir, and Peggy Saddle to come up as a panel from the MHA and Organization of Nurse Leaders. And after that, we'll have the MNA panel of Katie Murphy, Kathy Cashin, Ellen Smith, and Laurie Spa. So you'll be up next. Okay. Excellent. So just make yourselves comfortable.
The fourth chair, please.
Okay. Sorry about that. And who would like to begin?
Sure.
Great. And again, if you would just quickly, with the folks behind you, say who you are and where you're from, I'd be grateful.
Thank you.
And as a panel, you're--
This'll take a little break. Thank you for your time today on this important topic. My name is Tim Quigley, and I've been bedside RN in intensive care units for 12 years, a nurse for 30 years, and a chief nursing officer for the past 18 years, the past 11 of which at the community bed hospital, South Shore Hospital. I'm also a proud member of the Organization of Nurse Leaders. In addition, I was also licensed respiratory therapist and kid for many patients on ventilators, and as I stated, worked as a bedside intensive care nurse at academic medical centers at Yale and Haven, UMass Worcester Mass General Hospital for 12 years. Today, I would like to speak to you about the key issue of outcome measures that are nurse-sensitive and directly relevant to the care of the patient in an intensive care setting. I fully support three of the four measures released by the Health Policy Council on March 4th. The only one proposed measure of concern is patient falls, which would be better defined as patient falls with injury. These are all valid and reliable measures that are nurse-sensitive, that are nurse-sensitive, do not create additional administrative burdens to collect as they are already being collected, and are all performed in the context of team-based care, that is the critical element of intensive care settings. By focusing on these four measures at South Shore Hospital, in the past five years, we've already reduced infections in urinary tract infections by 8%, central line infections classies to less than 1%, falls with injury to less than the national average, hospital bar pressure also to 50% of the national average. Valid external benchmarks are extremely important for all of us to improve our practice. We have done this great work by having frontline colleagues look at their own individual and collective practices, by understanding and applying the latest evidence, most importantly, by reducing the variation of our practice as nurses and as key members of the entire intensive care team. For example, last year, we realized that we had an opportunity to reduce caudis, those are infections caused by Foley catheters, by ensuring that drainage bags were below the level of the patients being transported, which happens frequently in the ICU as these patients go to many tests. We have essentially eliminated classies, which are central line infections, by bathing the patients in the ICU with special bath wipe disinfectant daily. All of these advancements were driven by the frontline nurses. I commend you for your selection of these measures, but would only state that latest evidence states that falls with injury is a better and more relevant outcome measure for ICU patients. Falls alone do not represent intensive care nurse-sensitive outcomes in the community, as many patients are detoxifying from substances that cannot be restrained and will dramatically skew fall rates in a low denominator and may have a prevalent community-intensive care setting. For example, my 24-bed ICUs can only generate 24 beds a day for that denominator calculation, while an academic setting can often generate greater than 100 a day, and one fall in my community setting skews the outlier, skews and creates an outlier issue that does not benchmark well against an academic setting. I also do not believe that the failure to rescue indicated proposed by others is a valid measure, as it is not easily measured, is confounded by factors outside of staffing, specifically computerized decision support systems, the experienced level of nurses, physicians, and other members of the team, and how will they communicate with each other. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Peggy Saddle. I'm the Nurse Director of the Newborn Intensive Care Unit at Mass General, and I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you again about the proposed regulations for the ICU staffing law. As I shared in my prior testimony, NICUs use well-researched perinatal staffing guidelines to maintain their levels-- Okay, so they use-- My prior testimony, NICUs use nurse-staffing perinatal guidelines that are approved by national organizations. These guidelines delineate the levels of care for infants in the newborn intensive care unit as requiring intensive care or requiring Level 2 care. The guidelines help us determine the number of nurses that we need for each shift, anticipating patients that may be born in the delivery room during the shift, and also the unanticipated patients that we may receive a request from a Level 2 community hospital who has delivered a baby that requires intensive care. These agreements between ICUs and hospitals are based on the DPA regulations. If we apply this law to patients in a newborn intensive care unit, we'll be going against the perinatal guidelines that have been well-established in the research literature. I shared these proposed regulations with my staff, and there are two specific scenarios that create considerable concern for them. The first is for hospitals that accept transfers from the Level 2 community hospitals. So these are babies born at a Level 2 hospital that require intensive care. If there are 16 patients in my newborn intensive care unit, and I have eight nurses on, and five of these patients are considered Level 2 patients by the perinatal guidelines, and I have eight nurses, so if I have 16 patients and eight nurses, and receive a call from a community hospital that we have an agreement with, the nurse has one choice. She can either break the law and delay treatment for a baby, or she can break the law and accept the patient, or she can maintain the current staffing regulations as described by the law and delay treatment to a critically ill infant needing to come to a newborn intensive care unit. So that creates a dilemma for them. The second dilemma that is of great concern for nurses in the newborn intensive care unit involves mostly inborn NICUs, and for those patients, we usually staff based on, again, as I described, the patients that are in our unit, as well as the patients that we anticipate will receive from labor and delivery. But sometimes, and I would say probably once a week, someone comes in from the emergency room and delivers a baby. And so in this particular situation, it's 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and I have the same 16 patients, five of which are considered Level 2 by these well-researched perinatal guidelines. I have eight nurses, and a mother comes in and delivers unexpectedly an infant at 27 weeks gestation. Now, if the-- Now, the nurse has to make the choice of, do they reassign the patients based on the perinatal staffing guidelines, or do they transport this 27-week gestation infant to a different hospital, separating the mother and creating these potential morbidities when you are transporting that 27 weeks gestation? These are scenarios that my staff are very concerned about, and they're wondering why we can't adhere to the perinatal guidelines that have been well-researched and well-established and in effect for the last 15 years in NICUs across this state and across the country. So I'm urging you to utilize the perinatal guidelines when you think about staffing newborn intensive care units rather than the ICU law guidelines. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Melissa Bay. I'm the Director of Parent-Child Services at South Shore Hospital. I've been a nurse for over 35 years and have always cared for mothers, infants, and children. I'm appreciative of this opportunity to speak to you again about a topic of which I'm very, very passionate about. My extensive background in many hospitals as a direct care patient provider, as an educator, and as a leader provides me a vantage point on how we care for mothers and their infants through a variety of lenses. Throughout my career, I've found that one of the foremost keys to success is this collaboration between the team caring for these patients. Our success moving forward will hinge on this collaboration between the nurse at the bedside, the nurse leaders, respiratory therapists, neonatologists, who all have the goal of providing the best possible care for these critically infants. Reflecting on the legislation for the nurse-to-patient ratios, I'm really concerned about the law binding these units and how it could prevent NICU teams from safely caring for patients moving forward. As what Peggy had related to in past discussions, we convey the nuances of the NICU, which make it different than an adult critical care unit, including the inability to protect the total number of infants that might be delivered during any shift, the speed at which an infant status can change, for either better or for worse, and the specialized training that NICU nurses require, which all impact the total number of staff available for surges and census, as well as the limited number of NICUs in the state. I'm hoping that the total picture painted was the need of flexibility of all staff involved in the care of these infants. Staffing for care of both the mother and the neonate have had established recommendations for well over three decades, and this law mandating a 1:1 or 1:2 nurse staffing ratio for all patients at all times in NICUs is actually less robust than this, as well as complex with these established NICU standards. The Association of Women's Health of Steptical and Neonatal Nurses, or A1, and the National Association of Neonatal Nurses, or NAN, have addressed the issues around nurse staffing, which is far more comprehensive than just defining a nurse-to-patient ratio. In fact, appropriate nurse staffing is defined as a match of registered nurse expertise with the needs of the recipient of nursing services in the context of the practice setting and situation, and this is from ANA. Staffing according to these perinatal guidelines allows stable Level 2 infants to be safely cared for, the ratio of one nurse to three patients, but these infants may need to be cared for in NICU because of certain clinical and family factors, such as not wanting to separate twins, which might be a Level 1 or a Level 2 and a Level 3 care. In nurse judgment, and these established perinatal guidelines allow for NICUs to provide the best possible care with a proven record of positive outcomes. These years of success of improving outcomes for NICU patients is tied directly to the focus of these professional nursing organizations on nursing care, staffing, and collaboration across all disciplines. The law should not apply to the NICU, and I request that you consider these guidelines and our record of excellent NICU care as we further develop these regulations.
Thank you. Before you leave, if I could just ask one question. Peggy, you implied, or I inferred, that if these staffing ratios were in place and your unit was ostensibly full, that you would have to divert a referral from a community hospital within you had an arrangement, a referring arrangement. How often do you have to go into a diversion mode now? How often does that happen?
Using the perinatal guidelines, never.
Okay.
Oh, never.
Or close to never?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. I just had that one question. We usually do offer the Commissioners and staff an opportunity to ask follow-up questions. And actually, Kate or Kelly, I'm really sorry that we don't have enough seats for those who are standing-- So there's seats all the way over. If you would like to fill in, you think you would like to stand. If anyone would like to stand, there's quite a crowd back. You'll be in excellent company. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate that. Okay. Next, I'm going to ask the MNA panel, and I will say led by Katie Murphy, just because you're the first name on the panel list, to come forward. And after that, we'll have the Massachusetts Hospital Association panel led by Tanya Mandahas, Donna Jem, and Paul McKinnon. So you will be up next, and I apologize for MNA's pronunciation. So, welcome. Pleased to have you here. And you're going to start, terrific, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you again. Thank you. My name is Katie Murphy. I serve on the MNA Board of Directors, and I brought my lunch. I'm used to doing my work through lunch. Thank you for taking this testimony on the proposed regulations for the ICU nurse staffing. I testified previously that I have four decades of nursing experience, 38 years of them in critical care. I point out to my newer colleagues that when I began nursing, there was Dijoxin, Lidocaine, and a defibrillator. People died of acute kidney injury. We didn't see any adults with secondary malignancy due to the therapy they had received for their childhood leukemia. Most of them died. Today, we routinely dialyze the most fragile patients, pull them through their acute crisis, and send them back to the medical floor where many are discharged. We support young parents on extracorporeal membrane oxygenation until lungs become available for transplant. We save lives and limbs, and then, when we cannot, we sit for hours at a bedside and help our patients to a peaceful death. The stable patients are at home. When my patient has survived a critical illness and is ready to be transferred, I'm able to take a second patient. It only makes sense. I work the night shift. There's a finite number of critical care nurses to be found at 2:00 a.m. We make sure that the patients who need the most intensive care receive it, but only the professional providing that care can make that determination. I worked at two hospitals, a big Boston teaching hospital and a for-profit community hospital. At the latter the other night, there was a patient who was intubated, on a ventilator, on vasoactive infusions, and receiving many medications as well as enteral feedings. She had many draining wounds requiring frequent position, dressing, and linen changes. This required two persons, and since this community hospital provides no ancillary personnel or secretary after 3:00 p.m., this means two nurses. The supervisor arrived in the ICU, didn't assess the patient, go in and look at the patient, or assist with care of the patient. She announced that the patient was not a 1:1. This is the very essence of our goal, to protect our patients. Should this patient survive and thrive, the nurse providing direct care would be able to determine whether there was another patient on the ICU who could also receive excellent care if this nurse were to be responsible for both of them. The professional judgment of the nurse must be the determining factor. Any acuity tool is just that, an instrument to support the nurse's assessment as needed. I use Quadromed at the teaching hospital. I dutifully check the boxes, but do not believe it captures the intensity or the reality of the critical care bedside. It's similar to you reporting to a friend that you sat in hearings all day. Gee, doesn't sound too tough. Only you are aware and understand that you hold people's lives in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Good morning. My name is Ellen Smith. I'm an ICU nurse in a medical ICU at UMass Memorial Medical Centers, University Campus. I am a strong supporter of the new ICU law. Unfortunately, my employer has refused to follow the law and nearly every day failed to provide the nursing and support staff needed to meet the 1:1 standard of care that is called for under the new law. Every day, we are doubling patients that should not be doubled, placing them in danger because our management has made no effort to staff our unit to meet the new law. Last week, we were told-- Last week, we were told we will now be expected to mobilize and ambulate every patient under our care during our shift, regardless if they are on a vent. In making this requirement, there had been no effort to increase the amount of occupational therapists, physical therapists, or respiratory staff to support us. Never mind the fact that there was no way to fulfill this requirement if and when you have a two-patient assignment. Your draft regulation will not help the situation. In fact, will give my administration and every other hospital administration the inviolative power to ignore the intent of the law and the standard of care it is intended to provide. Throughout the regulations, you incorrectly state that the staffing standard is one-to-one or one... or, excuse me. The standard is one-to-one or one-on-one or one-to-two. When this is not the case, I can tell you now, just as they have willfully violated the law without this language in place, if the final regulation includes this incorrect standard, our management will use it to further undermine our standard of care. Second, under Section 8.06, you grant ultimate authority to management to determine the final acuity tool to be submitted to DPH for use at my hospital. This cannot be allowed to stand. We nurses should have a majority voice in creating the acuity tool, and what we create must be the tool submitted to DPH. If we could trust our managers to make appropriate decisions about staffing and determine acuity, we wouldn't need this law. Now that we have a law that puts the needs of our patients as a priority, please do not create regulations that give management the right to undermine it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, my name is Kathleen Gatchen, and I'm an ICU nurse at St. Vincent's Hospital. I've been an ICU nurse for 30 years and a nurse for 32. I would like to focus my testimony on three specific points. First, I would like to focus on makeup of this committee at each hospital. We work to create and approve the acuity tool or tools to be used at that particular hospital. It is extremely important that the acuity tools chosen are specifically designed to meet the needs of each hospital, as some hospitals have general ICUs while others have multiple specialized ICUs. This will not be a case where one side picks off across all hospitals and all types of ICUs. The need of an ICU like mine, a critical care unit, which cares for medical, surgical, cardiac, and cardiothoracic patients, will be different from the needs of a burn-specific ICU or NICU. To do this, the committees at each hospital must include at least 50% of the direct care ICU-registered nurses, and these nurses must reflect the needs of the specific ICU. For example, not all of the RNs who are educated to care for all of the patients that come into our units. There are universalist RNs who are prepared to care for all and any types of patients who enter those doors, but then there are also RNs who are preoccupied and who are not experienced to care for all of them. For example, cardiothoracic patients or cardiac patients who have intracardiac balloon pumps in them. We work this out in the unit amongst ourselves when caring for our patients at this time. If a cardiothoracic patient is admitted, we know which nurses have the most experience with this type of patient, but it is important that the RNs caring for all types of patients are on the committee to choose an acuity for one-to-one nursing care. They understand when one-to-one nursing care is necessary and of the utmost importance to deliver high standards of care that we all strive for to prioritize patients in their most vulnerable, critical conditions. And I cannot stress enough the importance of this committee, which must comprise of at least 50% of the direct care ICU nurses, having the ultimate authority to accept or reject any tool. Hospital management must not be allowed the opportunity to override this decision. If not, all of our work that we have done in passing this law and all of the work that you have done in drafting these regulations will have been for nothing, and we will be right back where we were. Hospital management, not the nurses, making decisions for all of our patients and putting them at risk. The second point I would like to make is about the importance of requiring more frequent assessments of the ICU patients.
I'm going to need to interrupt. I apologize. The panel has one moment left, one minute, which is different from a moment. So if you two would caucus and see if maybe you can cover the second point, that would be great, but I need to ask you to pick out your most important paragraph and limit your testimony to that. I'm sorry, but we'll never... we will be here through your lunch and possibly your dinner.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Laurie Spall. I'm a nurse at St. Vincent's Hospital, ICU for 10 years, a nurse for 17 years. I'm not going to read my whole thing like I was.
Do you feel free to take a moment and just kind of glance through and think about which point would you like to make that might not yet have been made by the panel? So take a moment to do that, and then you can express that thought well.
I'd like to talk about Section 8.05, where you state that the staff nurses on the unit shall assess the stability of that patient using the acuity tool to govern when the nurse can receive a one-to-two patient assignment. And the way it is written, the acuity tool appears as though it has more importance than the nurse's judgment. I feel strongly that this language should be changed visibly and concisely state that it is the evaluation, assessment, and judgment of the staff nurses working in the ICU on a daily basis that is the ultimate factor in determining acuity and stability of the patient and at what point another patient can be added. The tool is there as a supplement to the judgment of the staff nurse, and once the nurses make that assessment, the law needs to be followed and honored by the hospital and the managers. That is why the assessment must also be included in the patient record. That is the only way to ensure that it cannot be changed after the fact.
Great. Thank you so much. And again, I apologize for having to cut your testimony short. Two things. One is, a few of us have some questions. And second, because you weren't able to complete your testimony, please submit it in written testimony and feel free to write a note to me personally saying, "I did not get to finish." So we make sure that we get all of your thoughts there. And so, Dr. Ellen has a question, and then I just have a point of clarification.
Mine is also clarification, Ms. Smith. You said that the hospital was disobeying the law as it currently is written. I want to understand, are you saying that they are actually staff? I know that there's some disagreement about whether the law says it has to be one-to-one or one-to-two. Are you saying they're going beyond one-to-two? That's what I would like to know.
Not in my unit, because nurses do refuse. But we've been told that if there's an admission coming in and they need the bed immediately, put the patient in the hallway with nobody, if it's on transfer, and those are the patients that usually, you know, be compensated.
Thank you. And this is more of a philosophical question, but Smiley, you mentioned sometimes you have to help your patients to a peaceful death.
Yes.
It strikes me that, as we're dealing with hospitals, their compassion, that more and more people are not dying a good death. They're being admitted to hospital when they should be home perhaps. And I guess my question has to do with, how frequently, in your experience, in any view, I guess, in your experience, are you seeing ICU patients who are occupying those ICU beds and having a lot of things done to them and then dying, or who would have been, you know, should have been perhaps in hospice or some other... I just want a sense of the magnitude of that.
I mean, I think that the literature these days is saying that in the last six months of our lives, we spend, you know, the lion's share of our health care. I think I see a lot of that, a lot, in both, you know, as they say, I'm in two different hospital settings, and the reasons are myriad, but because often if a patient has been there for a while and the patient's care is now futile, and we are, as I say, you know, we're the branch of health care that does help our patients to a peaceful death, they'll stay there so that we can continue, so that that relationship can continue. We often don't move those patients out of the ICU.
The implication is then that they're taking away care from a patient who could recover and get a need for care. I mean, I'm not saying that what you're doing is not useful, because obviously it is.
Right, right.
It's more of, is there something with the system where we're not getting those patients cared for properly? And therefore...
Would there be another setting in the health care environment where they, you know, I think that that certainly, you know, would be possible, you know, maybe in a different environment, you know, whether the patients, sometimes they are still on life support, so that would come into play. I will say that sometimes that patient, especially if you have a good relationship with that patient, then you are able to pick up another patient, you know, depending on how often at that point it's the family that requires a lot of the care. But I think you bring up a very, very good point, that there could be a less acute setting in which these patients could receive excellent care at that time in their lives, in their family's lives.
And we promise we'll limit our existential questions. Each commissioner gets one.
It's part of the whole deal.
That's okay. I just have one point of clarification, Ms. Smith. When you were talking about the commission and this committee's proposed regulations reflecting the one-to-one, one-to-two staffing ratios, whether that is correct or incorrect, that actually is written into the statute by the legislation, so we have no choice. As a committee and as a commission recommending the regulations that will enact the legislation, it was the legislation and the statute that mandates that. So just a point of clarification about what the limits of our capabilities are informing those regulations. Thank you so much. Really, really appreciate this. You're welcome. Okay, the next panel, and this is the Massachusetts Hospital Association, Organization of Nurse Leaders Panel, headed up by Tanya. If you would bring your panel up, that would be great. And then after that, we will go to the Massachusetts Nurses Association Panel, and that one is the one led by Maureen Horan. Okay. Welcome. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tanya Mangahassan. Recently, for my master's nursing program, I completed an in-depth review of acuity tools and possible solutions in the context of this legislation. I currently work as a nursing informatic specialist at Lady Hospital Medical Center and have extensive experience in critical care and emergency medicine as both a bedside nurse and an educator. This background, combined with my knowledge of health care information system selection, implementation, and maintenance, provides me with a broad knowledge of how an acuity tool can impact patient care and hospital operations. In order for an organization to meet the requirements and intent of this bill, they must create or select an acuity tool that can assist in differentiating between a single or double assignment status. Completion and utilization of the tool must be efficient and seamless in nursing practice. It must reflect the organization and patient population by supporting all types of critical care units, staff competency levels, have a holistic methodology that includes physiological, psychosocial, education, and care coordination needs of the patients. Most importantly, the tool should not be burdensome to the nurse. By requiring or prescribing measurement of specific clinical indicators as detailed in 8.074A and B, the calculation of an acuity tool for an organization that opts for a manual system will be extremely time-consuming. I suggest that 8.074A and B be removed and the statement contained in 8.074 be amended to state. The acuity tool shall include indicators that incorporates patients' physiological and psychosocial complexity related to care, scheduled procedures, medication, and therapeutic supports appropriate to the ICU population and its environment. Regardless of the system that is chosen, either electronic or manual, these are complex tools to implement. Either will require a team to complete a market scan to identify tools that fit their environment and needs, complete the RFP process to narrow the choices and select an option, submit and get approval for budget allocation for purchase, development, testing, validation, training, implementation, and maintenance costs. Further, if an electronic acuity tool is selected, this will require system integration and interoperability via interfaces and mapping for ADT, staffing, HR, and EHR solutions. All of this needs to occur in the context of other competing organizational projects that require funding and resources. Therefore, I urge the committee to maintain the wording found in 8.062A that tasks the advisory committee to make recommendations to the acute hospital on the development or selection and implementation of the acuity tool. This decision must be made in the context of understanding an organization's IT infrastructure, financial resources, and available and required expertise. Without this broad understanding, I fear that the resulting tool will not be successful and meet the bill or staff needs. In Section 8.13, the deadline for certification and implementation for all Massachusetts hospitals is October 1, 2015. This deadline is unrealistic. Given that this date is a mere 25 weeks away and the DPH certification requirements have yet to be defined, hospitals do not know what to implement. Even if they were to find 25 weeks, it's too brief a time to properly assess, purchase, and implement a tool. Therefore, I would strongly urge this committee to refrain from setting an implementation deadline until certification requirements have been clearly defined. Once these requirements have been determined, the committee should consider the vast array of complexities I have outlined and establish a more realistic timeframe for which Massachusetts hospitals must implement their acuity tool. My suggestion is to allow for one calendar year in order for hospitals to properly and effectively implement a tool. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Donna Jem, and I'm the Chief Nurse at Metro West Medical Center, and I thank you for allowing me the time to speak today on behalf of the community hospitals and the impact on the proposed regulations regarding ICU staffing. I've worked in critical care for over 20 years as a staff nurse, critical care educator, and a nurse manager before assuming administrative responsibilities in nursing. I can tell you that I've held positions as nurse director and associate chief nurse at an academic medical center, UMass Memorial and Worcester, and for the past three years have held the chief nursing position and vice president of Patient Care Services at Metro West Medical Center, which is comprised of two community hospitals, Bramingham Union and Landon Morrison Native, both of which have intensive care units. I urge the health... I urge the Health Policy Commission to remove the "at all times" and "at any time" language from the ICU regulations. Having worked in multiple ICU settings in both community and academic medical centers, I can tell you that patient populations vary greatly. The language prevents flexibility for nurses in all hospital ICUs to effectively care for patients, and the challenges are paramount in community hospitals. We don't have the same tertiary care and paternity care that academic medical centers provide to patients, which is highly specialized teams and equipment, and we don't have the same resources as academic medical centers and community hospitals. Just to give an example of Metro West Medical Center, on one campus, we have, you know, a somewhat step-down unit, and at the Native campus, we do not. So we have to care for patients in various ways to put patients in the right setting. So the difference between an acute care assignment and ICU assignment is in the care of that patient and monitoring of the equipment sometimes warrants the patient to be in the ICU. So we don't all have continuous pulse oximetry monitoring in all our bedsides and technical and specialized equipment, and close nursing monitoring that would be on an acute care mass surg unit is not sufficient for patient care, however, doesn't always require intensive care in nursing as well. So I'm just trying to show you the subtle differences in the community hospitals. So, you know, we really value that ICU nurses, they're critical thinkers, they're highly skilled, they're able to prioritize and handle unexpected situations. That's why they're part of our co-teams and our critical care rapid response teams, and we rely on their skills and ability and judgment to care for our patients safely. The voice of the nurse is essential, as you heard, with patients who may be instituting new treatment or even withdrawal of care, and we want to be able to protect that resource for our patients. By the regulation of any at all times and one-to-one assignment is going to warrant our ability to do that for every patient, and it actually, in many of our opinions, is a critical flaw in the law. So we urge you to consider that, knowing the differences between community hospitals and academic medical centers are not the same. And by compartmentalizing ICU nursing care to one-to-one assignments is not the intention of the law, and we feel it would be a real critical flaw to safely care for all ICU patients with adequate resources. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to share some insights regarding the application of the proposed regulations. My name is Paul McKennan. I'm the chief operating officer at Health Alliance Hospital in Long Beach, Mass., which is a small community hospital. I'm a registered nurse and have occupied several clinical, academic, and administrative roles over the last 35 years. I'd like to share with you some insights regarding the implications of the proposed regulations. I'm particularly concerned with the "at all times" language and how it would create some really practical barriers to care for patients on a daily basis. I would like to share with you also some potential inadvertent outcomes of the proposed regulations from a community hospital perspective, how the role of the nurse manager in staffing decisions, and the impact to hospital flow. At Health Alliance, we have a 10-bed ICU that cares for medical surgical patients. Some patients may be stable, unstable, ready for discharge, or boarding, or waiting for a transfer to a lesser area of care, a lesser acuity care. At any time, one or a combination of these factors requires flexibility to focus on the resources needed for the patient. For example, with the severely ill, it is very common practice for the nurses in the ICU to help each other out, to actually go and aid their colleagues when the person is critically ill, or severely ill. Now, this other nurse that they're helping may have staff or may have patients that are ready for being discharged, so the way the regulation is out would preclude them from helping out their colleagues, actually. In addition, "at all times" would impede the ability to effectively admit patients from the emergency department to the ICU. And as you're probably aware, the winter has been pretty crazy as far as patients go. And in the emergency department, we're trying to transfer a patient to an available ICU bed while we're calling in additional staff for the ICU. Well, really, we're able to effectively do that. What the regulations would preclude us from doing is to actually get that patient admitted to the ICU, leaving the patient in the emergency department. And the science is very, very clear that the longer the patient waits in the emergency department, their mortality exponentially goes up. So the law would prevent, or at least the way it's written right now, would prevent us moving a patient to a high level of care.
Paul, I'm going to let you know that the panel's over. It's 10 minutes, so if you would pick your favorite several sentences and wrap up, that would be great.
Get in the hall, come.
You are, you are.
I think, you know, without reading my paper, the bottom line to this is that management, staff, the nurses, the physicians, the rest of the care team, you have to have flexibility, and that's really the bottom line. And what happens with the way the rules are written right now, it limits that flexibility, and it limits the ability to effectively care for the patient due to the restrictive nature of the way the language is written. That's basically the bottom line.
That's terrific. Thank you so much. Let me ask you just to stay for a moment for a question.
Actually, it's more a comment. I appreciate the specificity of some of the language that you talked about, and also, so what I'd like to do is encourage you in the written testimony to, if you have a suggestion, and who's this or anybody, to please put it in your written testimony so that we can take advantage, I'm sorry, of your expertise. And I would also encourage you, please, to highlight, I think, one of the things we have to understand is the differences between community hospitals and academic medical centers, and if you could highlight specifically those issues in your written testimony, and any suggestions, specific suggestions, how to get around, not to get around, but how to accommodate to the language of the statute and still make it functional for the different settings, because I think it's a struggle that we encounter, is really, we understand there are different settings, and we have one or a statute to deal with, so we need help.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next panels that I'd like to invite up is the Massachusetts Nurses Association Panel led by Maureen Horan. Great. Hi. And do you have some pals joining you?
I hope so.
Right.
I hope so.
The people I have on your panel, and I apologize for mispronunciations, Karen Pettit, Linda Barton, and Harley, welcome. And then after this panel, I'll invite Frank Carthizer from Worcester Interfaith and the Worcester Community Labor Council to testify next. So, welcome to all of you. I don't need to remind you that you have 10 minutes to help us better understand your position. Thank you, and go.
Hi. My name's Maureen.
Maureen.
Maureen. I've been a nurse for 35 years. I work presently at university campus in a medical ICU, and I've been there for 10 years. I'd like to address the frequency of assessment, part of that, and especially in a medical ICU, we get all types of patients. They have all different conditions, and they can deteriorate within minutes. So we do understand how difficult it is sometimes to find help. But on top of this, we are now working pretty well without secretaries. They've cut our PCAs, which are nursing assistants. They have cut ancillary staff. They expect that we're going to watch detoxing patients or psychopatient one-to-one and have another patient as well. I have personally heard from some people in management as well saying that the ability to work without a secretary is, well, you nurses know how to take orders off, which now has put us into the realm of being a secretary and not a nurse. You know, we are leaving the bedside to do these other tasks. As a resource nurse, I also do resource charge nurse on occasion. I actually needed other staff to come in, and we used to have a really great flow pool, which meant that if you needed the help, the help was there. And I've had supervisors say, "Well, what is it that you want me to do? I have no one to send you," which means that giving up one of your other patients would have to go to someone who was singled already and singled for a reason. So now they're taking on the patient that should be alone with another patient as well. So that kind of puts everybody at risk. The frequent assessment, yes. We can assess patients every four hours without a doubt. We kind of do it every hour, basically. The other point I just really want to touch on quick is the danger of management picking the acuity tool. This is really like the wolf sitting in the hen house, if you ask me, because I have an example of what our acuity tool is right now, and they use terms like, "Your patient is busy," "Your patient is sick," "Your patient has tasks to be done," and the only one that really deserves to be singled are patients that are on dialysis or on hypothermic protocols, which isn't true, because they're not looking at the rest of the patients within the unit. They have no idea what our responsibilities are now, and they've changed. In 35 years, our responsibilities have changed tremendously. And so another example I'd like to give you is a supervisor who was nice enough and kind enough to say, "Your patient, staff called out, I'm going to send you someone. Would you like that extra help?" And I said, "Thank you very much." But in return, what I got was a manager who came in extremely upset, saying, "You should have been able to function without that, without even knowing what the unit looked like," and proceeding to call that supervisor back and saying, "You better watch out for my staff. They'll try to call a fast one on you." So if that's the attitude that we have, that we deal with, I think money's going to be the bottom line, and it's not going to be patient safety. And that's basically what I said.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Welcome. Good morning. My name is Karen Pettit, and I'm a nurse in the critical care unit at UMass Memorial Medical Center on the Memorial Hospital campus. I've been an ICU nurse for more than 12 years. My purpose today is to urge the Health Policy Commission to develop strong regulations for the new ICU law to ensure that the intent of the law is followed by hospital administration. Similar to Maureen's testimony, who works at the mothership, we have similar patient population and acuity, as well as ancillary staffing concerns. These regulations follow the intent of the law, which is to ensure that my patients, who are required to be assigned to just one nurse, receive that level of care, and that my assessment of my patients and that of my colleagues is followed. Unfortunately, on a daily basis, my employer is failing to provide the staff we need to ensure that our patients, who need one-to-one care, receive that care. On a regular daily basis, our core team has staff with seven or eight nurses, which means at best, most, if not all, patients end up being doubled regardless of the acuity level. After reviewing your draft regulations, I can see that you include language throughout these regulations that would allow my management to continue to staff at this level, because you don't make it clear, as the law intends, that the default assignment for any patient entering the ICU is to want one-to-one based on the assessment of myself and my colleagues. The other issue I'd want to address is the fact that at my hospital, nearly every day when nurses leave the unit to take a patient to MRI, CAT scan, respond to a code blue or a code stroke, or even to take a lunch, other nurses on my unit are expected to care for three or four patients during that timeframe. I was pleased to see that your draft regulations seem to address this, in that they state that the limit of one or two patients is for all times during the shift, and that no nurse can ever have more than two patients at a time. This language must remain in these regulations and cannot be weakened in any way. My patients are critically ill, and many are very unstable. I can't anticipate if my patient's going to go into heart failure or respiratory distress while I'll leave the floor with another patient for a procedure or I'm going to lunch. No ICU nurse can predict when a patient's condition might change, and we shouldn't change our level of care for patients simply because our hospital won't provide enough staff to compensate for these unexpected circumstances. We need you to help to make sure that my patients and those of my colleagues aren't placed in jeopardy, simply because our administration refused to abide by the law. I urge you to follow these recommendations of the MNA and to make these regulations strong enough to ensure the safety of my patients and the continuance of positive patient outcomes, and allow myself and fellow colleagues the opportunity to continue the excellent patient care we strive to maintain.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. We have three minutes left between the two of you, so I'm sure you can collaborate and get your message out together.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
I have written testimony that I will be submitting, and I'm just going to pick a few things that I have. My name is Harley Kitech. I am from Berkshire Medical Center, where I work at the critical care unit on 12-hour night shifts. I never get a lunch break. The reason that I do is because I don't want to burden my colleagues with taking the third and fourth patient, which is what we do. I would concur with both my colleagues here that the conditions are as very similar, and the management attitude is the same. I do want to say that, you know, in the presence of facts, opinions should have no sway, and I think it's been well documented, extremely well documented, that the intent of legislature in passing this law was that, you know, the default safe standard of care in all hospitals is one nurse to one patient, and this is without regards to cost. There's nothing in the law that is saying, you know, it's a cost-cutting law, it's a cost-containment law. And I know that the Health Policy Commission is very involved in those issues. It's part of their mandate, but in this case, you can handle something that really, it just doesn't speak to that. It's about quality of care, and I think that we should remind them of that. I guess I want to try to skip ahead here, because I want to give you some time. You know, I guess there was some testimony that I would concur with from last time. One is that Dave Sherman mentioned, and also Jennifer Posa, that it would be nice if the patients' families or the patients could be informed of their rights under this law. It's almost like the Bill of Rights for patients. They should know that this exists and that they have the right, the legislature, the people of Massachusetts, through their duly-elected representatives in a democratic process, said, "Hey, you have this right, entitled to have one-on-one care." They should be informed of that. And I think, you know, at a practical level, that's going to change management attitudes, because if the one thing that's going to change their attitudes is one of the patients' family members coming in and saying, "Hey, you know, why is it that I've got a nurse here who's gone on break, and now the other nurse has three patients?" You know, they should be able to advocate for themselves, and we should be able to advocate for them. Which brings me to my final point, which is that, you know, where I work, in Berkshire County, I work in a monopoly health system. There is only one employer for critical care nurses in Berkshire County. Most of my colleagues are afraid to speak up at all. It's almost as if they're abused spouses. One of my colleagues told me the other day, "Harley, you just take a beating and shut your mouth." And that's just how it is there. They have families that are moving, that's just the way it is. Well, I would like to see, like, almost like a whistleblower type of protection put into the law, so that for folks that are willing to advocate for their patients one-on, and I don't care which employee it is, whether it's a staff nurse or an orderly that's working with us, or anyone, that they are protected from any disciplinary action or retaliation by their employer, because otherwise, you know, at least where I work, it's going to be very difficult to make this change happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Regrettably, we are over time, so my suggestion is twofold. One, certainly submit your written testimony. Secondly, if you would just check in with Kate or Kelly, and if we do have any time remaining, I will invite you to come back and testify yourself.
Okay.
So if you would do that, depending on our time, I'd be glad to invite you back.
Sure.
Any questions? Thank you so much. For those of you who were here for my short preamble to the hearing, you'll recall that I said we always offer our legislators the courtesy of testifying and interrupting our normal life. So I am really pleased to welcome Representative Jim O'Day from the Worcester District, and he has an entire... he has an entirely wonderful delegation with him. So I would welcome all of you to come up. I certainly apologize, Frank, and you will be next.
Right, we will be brief. Okay. I thought you'd want to hear my testimony. I'll stick her out for it.
So in just one moment, we'll bring the additional chair. I didn't have an opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Svenne Everett. I'm the vice chair of the commission and the chair of the Call for Improvement in Patients Protection Committee, which is responsible for promulgating regulations to this piece of legislation. So we're thrilled to have you here. And I wonder, before you begin, if the other members of your delegation could just introduce themselves.
Absolutely pleased, and thank you for that opportunity. As Representative Dan Donahue from Worcester.
Great. Thank you. Hi, I'm Danielle Gregoire, represent Marlborough, Northborough, and Westborough.
Welcome.
I'm Representative Mary Key from 15th Worcester District.
Great.
Sure, I'm Representative Hank Norton. I represent the towns of Clinton, Lancaster, Sterling, Earl, and Royalston in Northborough.
Thank you so much, all of you, for taking the time to come.
And thank you, and thank you for taking us out of turn. I feel a little uncomfortable every time that happens. It happens at the State House, and yet we appreciate you for giving us that consideration. And certainly, good morning to you, Madam Chair, and to all the members of your distinguished panel here this morning. And so, you know, we're here today because, you know, we're concerned about some of the discussions that have been going on relative to enact, relative to patient limits in all the hospital intensive care units. And so that's what brings this delegation here this morning. You know, I don't think we have any nurses on the panel, we don't have any doctors on the panel, we don't have any hospital administrators amongst us. Who we do represent, though, is the Central Mass Labor, uh, excuse me, the Central Mass Legislative Caucus, and obviously, members of the House of Representatives. And we had the great pleasure of unanimously, unanimously, on the House side, as on the Senate side, of passing this bill. And we believe that we clearly understood the language of this pretty simply-written bill, which is great, because I think the simpler bills can be written, the greater the opportunity for all who are going to be impacted by a bill to understand what that bill's intentions are. And so, uh, our intention, when we voted unanimously to support this bill, was that all, all, all intensive care units, whether it be neonatal, pediatric, cardiac, adult, gerontology, you name it, all intensive care units, uh, would be covered by this one-to-one ratio relative to this piece of legislation. It's a little mind-boggling to me, if you would, that there is somehow, some way that this particular piece of legislation is being interpreted differently than that. As one of 160 legislators and several others to my right and left who voted on this bill, that was our understanding. So that's mainly why we're here today, is to make certain that all who are debating this, now outside of the House of Representatives, are as clear, that we can be as clear with all of you as we thought this bill was, right? It's clear, all intensive care units. So that's the number-one point I would like to make this morning, and I believe that all of my colleagues are in support of that statement. Secondarily, there is discussions being heard, I have my understanding, that there seems to be some gray area when you talk about one-to-one ratio. As a legislator, that seems pretty straightforward to me as well. One patient, one direct care nurse. That's pretty clear. I understand that there is the potential for a second patient to be added to the direct care nurse's responsibilities, but that's based on the input from that direct service nurse or direct care nurse, the stability of the patient that particular nurse is caring for, and the overall stability of a potential second patient. I understand that there is development of an acuity tool, and I believe that that tool is to be used in conjunction with the nurse's input, not separate and apart from. So we felt very strongly that it was important for us to come here today and to just clearly define what we as legislators, who voted, again, unanimously, both chambers, thought we were voting on, and what we were hoping would be the practice, the absolute crystal clear practice of all, of all intensive care units, regardless of age, and that the one-to-one ratio be adhered to in every possible circumstance. And that's what we have for testimony this morning. And thank you all very much for giving us this opportunity to come in and present our position on this, on this very, very important issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're very grateful for you having taken the time to do that. We may have a few questions, if you wouldn't mind staying for a few more moments. And these questions don't necessarily reflect the position of the commission at all, it's to clarify testimony that we've heard. This now is our third public hearing. One of the points that has been made several times over is that there are significant differences between patients in small, sometimes rural community hospitals and patients in academic medical centers. I wonder if you could just reflect for us the legislature's thinking about the differences, the potential differences, between the patients in academic medical centers, tertiary and quadrenary care patients, versus patients in community hospitals, so that we can better understand the testimony we're hearing.
You know, I don't know if anyone else has a point on this, but, you know, my belief would be that, you know, I think it would be easy for the larger hospitals to, or I should say, the smaller hospitals, to sort of, you know, present a case where there may be issues around staffing. But I believe as, as the bill was presented and as we voted on it, there did not seem to be, in my recollection, any splitting off of different-sized hospitals relative to, you know, what the actual care limitations were going to be. So it is one-to-one, and that's the very clear language. If there was an indication or a wish for it to have been differently laid out for the smaller hospitals, that did not become out of the current language that we're dealing with.
Anyone else in the delegation want to comment or make a particular remark?
I think Representative Norton, um, this wasn't done in a vacuum. This vote wasn't done in a vacuum. It wasn't, uh, our processes often criticized as being slow and too deliberate. I don't think it can be too deliberate. That was the way the founding fathers set it up well over 200 years ago. It's been followed in many instances around this country and around the world. So this piece of legislation didn't just come to the floor, it was feel-good legislation because, you know, none of us are nurses, but we've all been cared for by nurses over the course of our lives. This was, this was a piece of legislation that came through public health committee, healthcare committee, healthcare financing, and ways and means. So it was done deliberately. So the issues that you're alluding to here have all been talked through and talked about and debated, both at the committee level and on the floor level, in both the House and the Senate. So these things were taken into account, and as Chairman O'Day has told us, it was decided after much deliberation to not distinguish between sizes of hospitals. That would be the easy way out. If there's, uh, it would have been a slippery slope at that point. So this wasn't done in a vacuum.
Yes. Yeah. So, I'm Dr. Carol Allen, I'm a pediatrician. So I guess my question, we've heard a lot about the difference between NICUs and other ICUs. For example, the unpredictability of the number of patients, just how quickly you could go from a very small number to a larger number in your unit, as well as situations, for example, where there might be twins, where one of them does require level-three nursing care, the other does not, but you don't want to separate the twins from each other. And, but the second twin does, clearly does not require the same degree of nursing care. Did the legislature have any information about NICUs, or, you know, what was the thinking to include them in the legislation?
Well, again, and I don't mean to sound redundant or attempt not to answer that question, but I would think that those kinds of questions were, again, as Chairman Norton referred to, there was lots and lots and lots of vetting that has gone on relative, you know, to the safe staffing issues. As you all know, there are other, you know, other divisions within a hospital that we're not talking about at the moment, right? Where we looked and talked about numbers of patients to nurses ratios. But regarding that very specific point, my guess would be that it came up within those discussions, and I don't think anyone felt compelled to put neonatal as part of the title when we talked about intensive care units. It's whether it's neonatal or pediatric or adult, I think, I truly believe that the intent of the legislature was to cover all intensive care units in, with regard to a, you know, a, a twins scenario. And if the second twin, and I understand the idea of keeping those, those twins together, I was a social worker for 25 years, and unfortunately did my fair share of investigations at the medical center here in Worcester of children and the NICU. And so I know that there are many things to be concerned about, but probably, the insurance company, as much as anybody's going to object to the second child not being in it if the child doesn't need that level of care, right?
I have a, wait, there's probably a final question. Part of the responsibility that was referred to the commission was to establish quality measures that would be concomitant with the staffing issues and the acuity tool. And one of the focus, one of the focus of this hearing today is to really think about the acuity tools and those quality measures. I understand that the quality measures themselves are really embedded in the regulations, so that's a little more in our domain. But I wonder if you could just comment about the legislative discussion as to what role the quality measures would play in this piece of legislation?
Well, you know, I think I touched a little bit upon that in my previous testimony, that I think that it needs to be done in conjunction with direct service providers, with the nursing staff, because they are the ones that obviously are on the front line. And I think it's very important, you know, tools are terrific, you know, as a social worker, we had many different tools to try to use to assess families' needs and so on and so forth. But I think that really the hands-on work and the ability of both management and online staff to work, hopefully, in conjunction with one another, with both sets of experiences being utilized to come up with the most beneficial tool, beneficial for both the client, excuse me, the patient, and those providing the service.
Terrific. Thank you. Any final thoughts or comments anyone would like to make? We're really grateful to the delegation for coming. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And we will be back in discussion with you soon.
Thank you.
Okay, Frank, thank you so much for your patience. And, um, let me see. After Frank, I'll ask Dorothy McCabe from the MNA to testify. So welcome, and thank you so much for being flexible there.
Thank you. I'm Frank Carthy, I'm the lead organizer of Worcester Interfaith and co-chair of the Worcester Community Labor Coalition. I'll submit this testimony, but the point I want to highlight is that I'm a layman. Most of us are, as Representative O'Day, most of us are not doctors, nurses, but we've all been patients. So I'm kind of a layman to this system, so to speak. And my basic point is that I understand, and most of us understand now, that we have to be advocates for our loved ones, for ourselves and our loved ones in this system. We have to do that. We can't do it without the tools. The delegation has passed, as Representative O'Day said, a pretty simple, straightforward law, and we need that to be posted, we need people to be aware of it. If there's a disagreement in the unit about the staffing and the nurses disagree, we need to know about that as family members. We need to have all the information, the simplicity of it, the straightforward. It's no good if we don't know what we're up against, and we have to know that to be able to advocate. Doesn't mean we're going to get what we want, doesn't mean we're going to quote-unquote "win," but that's our job now, and we need the tools from you to be able to know what we're up against, know what our options are, and to do our jobs on behalf of our family, loved ones, and ourselves.
Great. And when you, just to clarify, when you speak about those tools, and I think there have been some really superb suggestions in all of the hearings about things that we could do differently, such as posting the regulations in a, in a family and patient-friendly way, what, what other tools would you like us to consider, along with sort of adding to Dr. Allen's question earlier as to providing us with real specific suggestions?
Right.
So if you could talk about those tools, that would be helpful.
Sure. One that I think of is there, from what I'm listening, again, I'm a, I'm a layperson in this, but from what I understand, there could be a disagreement about the staffing level between the nurses, the administration, or whoever makes those kinds of decisions. I think I ought to know that. Be aware that there was a disagreement, and that this is what we've decided to do for your loved one. And, you know, for me to know that and then to know the law, then, and maybe something about my capacity to respond to that, because I'm not on the ground, but, you know, I'm waiting. I'm anxious, and I'm waiting, and I'm nervous, and I need to understand what's happening.
Okay. So something about the
The posting of it, I think that the delegation said that it's a pretty simple and straightforward law, so if it's posted in the waiting room, or people are made aware of it, and then we're updated of it being used, and that it's, it's unique, it's in the ICU setting, and that's the value of it, and that's the need for it.
Terrific. So a public education campaign of some sort.
Yes, and information, right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I had just incorrectly invited Dorothy McCabe, who cannot be here, so in her stead is Linda Barton.
Linda Barton from the previous panel.
Barton from the previous panel.
No pressure.
Thank you.
No pressure. I guess pronounce my very easy last name, I graduated from college, too, just so we don't reveal that.
I know, I know.
It's an easy name.
And you, I should just give you a whole 10 minutes, because I had to cut you off, and I mispronounced your name. But you know I won't be able to do that.
Thank you. My name is Linda Barton, and I am a registered nurse in the ICU at Stuart Norwood Hospital, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to my concerns related to the draft regulations for the ICU staffing law. I would like to specifically address Sections 8.01 and 8.06. Our ICU is a 10-bed mixed unit. Our staff is very experienced, dedicated, hard-working, caring, and we are a very cohesive group, and we do help each other all of the time. Each day, we are faced with a full unit with patients on vents, vasopressors, sedation, patients withdrawn from alcohol. patients withdrawn from alcohol, patients who are fresh post-ops or fresh from cath lab, patients who have suffered a cardiac arrest and are on hypothermia protocol, patients who have overdosed either purposefully or accidentally. And all of these patients need nursing, nursing to frequently monitor and assess them. An acuity tool is a tool, but the nurses need to be doing the assessments. Our patients need to be turned every two hours to protect their fragile skin. And this speaks to the quality measures that you've spoken about. Quality measures to obtain them need nurses, need nursing staff to make sure that we can obtain those quality measures and reach the benchmarks. Most of our patients are completely dependent on the nursing staff to be bathed. Frequently, at least two nurses are required to do this and sometimes more because our patient population sometimes goes into the 300 and 400 and 500 pound range. Each day, the expectation is that we take two patients. Although an acuity tool is being developed at Norwood Hospital, currently, the new law is not considered at all. And I think this probably is statewide, no matter what hospital you work at. If we have a patient whom we really insist must receive full one-to-one nursing care, the only plan in place right now at my hospital is to move the most acceptable patient to the recovery room for nursing care. And none of us are very happy about that, but that's all we have right now. We simply don't have enough staff. And just yesterday, a nurse took a third patient because the unit was so busy and there were two one-to-one nursing patients. And there was absolutely no, there was no other option. So she took a third patient, which we're really distressed about. Patients are generally in a hospital for 24-hour nursing care, yet nursing is constantly battered, berated, and bullied into doing more with less. We are the backbone of the patient care experience, yet we only hear about how expensive we are and that we need to learn to get by with less staff, all the while we're asking please for more staff. And the law also addresses that. So even if we have enough nurses for the census and the acuity, we lack an aide. I know that people have spoken about this. We have no aide, we have no secretary. The pharmacy staff, which is mentioned in the law, is cut. So we're constantly looking for IV medications. We're calling them all the time. I need another bag of vasopressor. I need another bag of vasopressor because they cannot keep up either. The patients have many family members who rightly expect to be updated on a regular basis, who have many questions and who may be very emotional about the condition of their loved one. They require nursing care as well. And that must be considered when making our staffing decisions. And in summary, we simply need more nurses, we need more aides, we need adequate ancillary help, we need a strong physician presence, which sometimes is lacking. And anything less than that, I feel, is very disrespectful to the patients and to the nursing profession. And in terms of the community hospital that has been brought up, community versus the teaching hospitals, there probably is more staff at the teaching hospitals. But at my hospital, I would just say that we need to hire more help. And I think that anybody behind me would agree with that. We need the flexibility if they need to hire veterans or increase the critical care flow pool to be able to go up and down, you know, as the census requires. And that's what the administration needs to do. And I thank you very much for the time. I'll buy myself up here.
And thank you for your flexibility. Let me, let me...
That's what we do with nurses.
Let me ask you an entirely different question that is not captured in your testimony, so feel free to add it as you wish.
Sure.
One of the reasons, again, for this hearing is to really have the nursing staff comment on the four proposed quality measures. And we have heard testimony both at the last hearing and very briefly, actually, less than I would have liked, about these quality measures. People have spoken about falls versus falls with injuries. I wonder if you could, understanding that you, I'm putting you completely on the spot, if you would just comment on these four measures, whether or not you think we've gotten close to finding measures that really are nurse-sensitive? Meaning that the nurse has an ability and a way to make sure that these four measures, don't have to comment on it, but that these four measures are achieved?
With an increased nursing staff?
No, no, by a, just by a nurse.
By a nurse. I would say the falls, it could be achieved by an aide to reduce the falls, as long as there's somebody there to watch the patient, keep them safe in the bed, keep them engaged. Sometimes they just need talking to, you know, reminding. So that could be done and actually often is done by what we call a sitter, a one-to-one sitter. But we don't have enough of them either. Or else the aide that we've been given is in a room sitting. So that isn't specifically nurse-related, but it is nursing department-related. Skin absolutely is a nursing assessment, a nursing monitor, a nursing intervention. We have to take care of the skin. We have to turn the patient. We have to change the dressings. We have to decide what kind of dressings they need. That is completely nursing. The catheter-acquired infections, that also, that's probably a combination of nursing and aides because the area needs to be cleaned really well while the catheter is in. And when it's out, we need an aide or us to turn the patient, get them on, knock their bedpans, or get them out of the bed onto a commode or into a bathroom if there is one in the unit. And the fourth is the which?
Blood stream.
Blood stream infections. Oh, yes, one of my favorites because we have a zero rate in our hospital. Because we take excellent, excellent care of our central lines and that is absolutely a nursing responsibility. And we have to have the time and the equipment to do it sterrily and carefully and slowly. We can't be rushed doing that. So, yeah, that's a nursing responsibility.
Very helpful and thank you. I appreciate you doing it, kind of right on the spot.
And thank you. Thank you. So let me pump that up.
You're welcome. Pleased to do so.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay. So our, the final person who has registered to testify is Joan Vitello from the Organization of Nurse Leaders. Welcome. Are we, we're having trouble with the battery? The battery, okay. Give us just one second or we'll come to you. Welcome. Thank you so much for coming. Can you hear me? Yes. Bring it a little closer and try it.
Hello? Yes. Good morning. My name is Joan Vitello. I am the associate chief nurse at Brigham and Women's Hospital. Very proud to be the president of the Organization of Nurse Leaders. And I am the past president of the American Association of Critical Care Nurses. I'm proud to be a nurse with over 20, actually 39 years of experience for 25 in critical care. I want to share with you an overview of the process that the Brigham went through in developing and implementing one specific acuity tool to help demonstrate why the points raised by Tanya, my colleague, should be strongly considered. The Brigham chose to implement Quadromed as a statistically valid tool over 20 years ago. Our ongoing effort to engage with the nursing staff is the most critical factor in our continued development and maintenance of the Quadromed tool. The last re-validation process occurred in the spring of 2012 and involved expert nurses from five of our units, two of which I support, who tested the proposed indicators and provided critical feedback to us. We do spend considerable time and effort to perform key updates and revalidations to keep pace with the ever-changing patient population, practice environments, technology, and nursing practice. At the Brigham, our Quadromed tool requires an IT analyst for at least five to 10 hours per week, two FTEs in nursing to ensure valid and reliable data, ongoing staff training, and many other resources just for the maintenance of this acuity tool. We have been working to perfect our system for more than 20 years and I can tell you that this is not a simple process. This took a significant amount of time, thought, cost, and other resources. If the HPC requires a fixed set of untested indicators, as Tanya alluded to, then we would need to completely redesign our classification system and change how we input this information. We have worked so hard to tailor this tool so that it accurately reflects the needs of patients and nursing workload in our hospital. We have worked with Quadromed to ensure that the acuity tool reflects the psychosocial and emotional needs of patients and families that are currently identified using the Quadromed indicators. I ask you to take into consideration the significant amount of work, time, and effort that went into building our current tool and compare this to what you are asking hospitals to produce in just a few short months. 25 weeks is 25 weeks. An October 1st deadline as proposed in the regulations is truly unworkable. And we certainly, and will not be feasible for the 80% of hospitals that currently do not have a tool in their ICU. I request that you reconsider the deadline for submission of the proposed acuity tool. We need more flexibility in the regulations that will allow hospitals to create an effective acuity tool with valued staff nurses. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions before you leave, Dr. Allen?
This is a clarified question. Are you suggesting that it would be better to use a standard existing tool rather than to have each hospital?
No.
Maybe I misunderstood.
Okay. I think each hospital is going to have to, community hospitals are very different and academic. You've heard my colleagues speak to those differences. I think it can be a paper or an electronic tool. It does need to meet the needs of patients and families and take into consideration the psychosocial and emotional needs as well as the physical needs of a patient. I think that the acuity tool can be, we've seen acuity tools at children's. That is excellent, a synergy model proposed by the American Association of Critical Care Nurses. I think the tool can be as flexible as it is. The only thing I'm concerned about is the timetable right now and the indicators, as I mentioned.
And let me just comment on the timetable because that is something that many people have spoken to. Obviously, even as the vice chair, I can't make promises because the committee has to meet about this and review the regulations that are currently proposed and then the entire commission will do so. But we are strongly considering extending that deadline, understanding that this is not feasible and that all of us in the room want and need a quality product that has, again, been recommended in, strongly recommended, if not mandated, in the legislation. So if we're going to do it, we're going to do it well. And we understand that that cannot be done well by the nurses, by the administrators in 25 weeks.
However, how really are patients concerned?
Yes.
On a relevant acuity tool? And so does the NASTA.
Exactly. It's a universal concern. Thank you very much. We have 15 minutes remaining in the scheduled time and I would offer that time to people who might have testimony that we didn't allow to be presented or people who would like to make comments and weren't able to sign up or anyone who would like to add to comments that have been made or ask questions of the committee. So that's quite a broad menu. Dorothy, I know that we didn't give you a chance because we substituted Linda Barton in there. If you would like to speak, that would be fine. If you would prefer to submit it, either way.
Well, I'm Dorothy McCabe. I'm the director of the Divisions of Nursing and Health and Safety at the Massachusetts Nurses Association and have had experience in management, education, and quality over the years. The Massachusetts Nurses Association strongly recommends the use of four quality indicators that have been shown to reflect ICU staffing and have been validated on a national level. For the effectiveness of the acuity tools, the focus should be on outcomes for which the research has demonstrated the most statistically significant link to higher staffing levels. We feel that nursing literature and science does appropriately reflect what we know to be the reality of caring for patients. And Linda spoke to this and so did someone else about catheters-associated urinary tract infections. And I think they explored that quite well. The second area that we are very, very strongly feel about is falls with injury. And this has also been statistically significant in our care for patients. And I believe Linda spoke to that also. Certainly, when the nurse is not there, this is what happens. A patient may try to get out of bed or inadvertently move to reach something or whatever and fall out of bed. The third one that we are kind of concerned about is the patient's report of pain. And one of the pain management is quality indicator. And we all know when patients leave the hospital after their illness, one of the things they talk about most is, was their pain relieved. We feel it's a quality indicator nationally validated by the Centers of Medicare and Medicaid. Pain management is often an indicator in ICUs associated with RN staffing. If the nurse is there and able to respond to the patient, they medicate the patient. But if the nurse is pulled in with two patients or three patients, often the call for pain management just goes, you know, unattended. Higher percentages of patients' pain control contribute to faster recovery due to their ability to participate in their care. The last one is, and I don't know because I wasn't at the Boston hearing, but failure to rescue. And that is an issue that concerns us greatly. It's a patient safety indicator included in the hospital inpatient quality reporting program. And it's nationally validated by the Agency for Healthcare Quality and Research. This indicator measures how often patients die after developing a quality complication. That often, high-quality hospitals can identify quickly and treat aggressively. Several serious treatable conditions of care listed in death among surgical patients or medical patients are one statistically associated with RN staffing, such as pneumonia, deep vein thrombosis, pulmonary embolism, sepsis, shock, cardiac arrest. So in summary, MNA recommends the four quality indicators that I presented. Urinary tract infections, self-report of pain quality and control, serious but treatable complications and failure to rescue, and pain. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave, we did actually have some very interesting testimony from the MNA at the first hearing. And one of the points that was made was failure to rescue applies far more often just to surgical patients and may not be fully under the control of the nurse. And so the testimony there was that it should not be included because we have to consider all ICUs and therefore to impose it on Medicaid, which might not have the same frequency of failure to rescue might not be fair. one way or another, nor have we really made that decision as a commission, but I just wanted to let you know that that was the testimony there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Very helpful.
We have a few moments remaining. Is there anyone else who would like to add to their testimony? Anyone I abruptly cut off who would like to finish their testimony?
I would like to add a comment.
Yes. Would you mind just stepping to the microphone? Thanks so much and definitely hardly welcome back.
Thank you. I'm gonna miss these.
You're gonna miss. Tea with the commission.
That's right. So I've been thinking about the quality measures and I didn't prepare any testimony on that, but you brought it to mind when you were talking about this measure that was really applied to surgical patients and not to medical patients or categories of patients. And I'm wondering that, you know, I know that the mandate from the law is that it's three to five reportable quality indicators. Is there room for sort of a middle ground where some of these that are applicable would be encouraged rather than mandated as a sort of like, well, so let's collect the data. Because this is your opportunity to see what, what is collectible. And we may find out for years from now that, hey, that really was a good measure. And if we've been collecting the data, then we'll have the data and we can make an amendment to what's allowed, if you'd like.
Actually, that's an excellent suggestion. I think that we have been working on eight and have narrowed it down to these four, again, because we don't want to impose unnecessary burdens on anyone in a hospital. So we felt that these were for the method criteria. I think your suggestion of finding a way, I think Lois in particular has a wonderful way of framing it as guidance. Thinking about this as a suggestion and collecting data over the next several years to see whether or not this is an appropriate quality measure, that's an excellent suggestion.
Because I think Julie Pinker had it correct. You know, we really want to find out whether this is working. And I think if we miss, like, you know, just those four, we happen to do a miss, if we have a broader doubt, then maybe we'll find where, what the real hits are.
Exactly. Exactly. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that suggestion here. I think it really resonates with us. And I've talked about having some sort of measure of patient's pain. It's not pain necessarily, but something else, patient damage that again falls into that category, not requiring it, but could you sort of suggest that hospitals might want to be following that because it may turn out to be good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Welcome back.
Well, thanks. It's difficult with the social environment for letting, uh, two major things. I already collected at the social hospital, 182 measures to deal with quality and contracts. So your point about, perhaps for additional measures is rings true to me. And I have an army of people collecting already as opposed to providing all those resources for, the only reason patients come to a hospital, which is for nursing care. So the reality is I'd much rather spend all that resource providing care than collecting. So additional measures really are a major issue. I have major concerns about the statements that were before around pain and failure to rescue. And I addressed the failure to rescue. My own testimony, that is essentially very subjective and hard to measure. It really didn't affect the data. It actually says, what's this clinical deterioration of a patient that should have, that happened, that should have been recognized earlier that resulted in nurses, like, patients in ICU, in ICU settings by definition are unstable. You can see a lot of that. So that is nursing intervention. We're constantly addressing and intervening to stop the cycle. Most of the failure to rescue events that have been published are out there, which is really one of the reasons for Raph response to incident in non-ICU settings. Don't call a, you typically don't call a code in an ICU because everything you need for a code is in the ICU. It's the medical, it's the medical surgical setting, the other settings outside that really address that. And pain is quite subjective. I mean, in a community hospital, the reality is that for most surgical patients or elective surgical patients, anesthesia and pain control is spectacular. There's a lot of blocks, a lot of epidurals, really quite well managed. And the pain science has moved enormously. The challenge is really in medical patients who often is detoxing, subjective about the level of pain. You have a lot of opiate tolerant patients and a lot of patients with significant alcohol substance abuse. So while they are in pain, from a nursing perspective, you are assessing not just their psychosis, their stated needs, but also the physiological response to pain. Another tactic is their heart rate, their breathing, their sweating. And a lot of those issues are quite subjective. So as the nurse, you need to have that ability to discern that in your assessments, that you, if a patient's reported as a certain pain, it is their pain. There's no doubt about that. But it's quite difficult to look at as an objective measure for that one. And those are some of the some of the.
Great. Thank you so much. So let me just wrap up the hearing today by thanking every single one of you for taking the time to come, for putting the enormous effort, thought, intelligence, and recommendations into your testimony, for being here to support your peers, and for really kind of understanding how important it is for the commission to hear your voice and to know that we will incorporate these suggestions and these ideas into the proposed regulations. We anticipate that these regulations will be released in May at some point, May, early June. So help me out.
A published timetable is, we're still tracking towards end of April.
End of April.
But just, you know, given the volume and nature of the testimony that we expect to review, we will announce whether or not that timeline shifts.
Right. Just, just to give you a sense of what to expect. And once again, please submit written testimony. And all of you know that the commissioners are available to speak to and talk. So thank you again. Safe travels and we will see you next time.